That God continue to strengthen him and to bless him every day. And so I'm honored that he is able to be with us again. We are all one community. Let me just say for the record, before I start off, I don't stand before you representing any facet or organization or collaborative within Norwood or outside. I stand before you today as a pastor within Norwood and more importantly, a resident. Recently, we have had a lot of misunderstandings of some of the things that I personally have been involved with. Let me just assure you all, everything that I do on a daily basis, it is to make life better for every human being that walks into this wonderful, wonderful community. And I want to encourage all of our leadership in Norwood. Whenever you see someone stand up and challenge something that has been doing wrong, and maybe it seems like we're opposition to what the status quo has been, it doesn't mean that we can't all get along. If I were to send you an email, if I were to text you and to invite you somewhere, it shouldn't be that we're all so much nervous about, well, where is Pastor James up to now? The only thing that I'm up to folks and fine citizens of Norwood is doing everything in my power, as long as God gives me breath, to stand up for anything, and I keep saying this, if there's a third grader at Sharpsville Elementary that is wondering about their destiny or their future, I put my life on the line that if that third grader were to follow me, walk with me, that he or she wouldn't do anything to embarrass God, themselves, their family, or this fine community. So I want to challenge you that just because we have issues that we have to address, and yes, from the top down, it doesn't mean that we can't get along. So I just want to stand before all of you and that way you hear it right from my mouth. Yes, I will stand up if there's something that is not fair or right in Norwood, but it doesn't mean just because it's not right, who has not ever made a mistake in this room or anyone listening? I know I have. So I don't come judging anyone. Sometimes we make poor choices. And all you will hear Pastor James saying or asking for is, "My bad." If we do something wrong as we move this fine community forward, let's respect one another. We recently had a horrific incident this past weekend at one of the church festivals. That is a tragedy. That is an insult to Norwood. It should never, ever happen. I don't care if it's black, white, blue, green, pink, or purple. And I will stand against anything that's done wrong in Norwood. But I want to encourage leadership. Sometimes we make wrong or poor choices. When that happens, my fellow peers, let's be bold enough to stand up, even if it's against the status quo, to say, hey, we made a mistake, or hey, we should have done it differently. And let's work together to give our children in this community a real thought, that they really have a shot to stand up and lead Norwood to be an awesome, awesome community. I love this community. I love everyone in the community. So if you ever have a question as to what my motives are, don't talk to the neighbor, don't talk to the person on the left or right of you. Call me. Talk to me. And I promise you, just because we may not see eye to eye, it doesn't mean we can't agree to disagree. And just because our skin color is not the same, guess what? When you bleed, your blood is the same color as mine. And when we all get to heaven, guess what? I don't think God is going to be saying, Reverend James, you are black. I think he's going to say, I hope he's going to say, "Well done, thy good and faithful servant. Well done." So I leave you with that. I just wanted to address all of you publicly to say, yes, we do have issues in Norwood. And yes, I am going to challenge and address each of those, but in doing so, we are all still peers. Let's act like it. God bless each of you.
Thank you, Pastor James. It's under the communication. One, the one that we're doing. All right. We have no other requests to address council. Is there any unfinished business amongst you all out here that you'd like to discuss, Mr. Sager?
Yes, Mr. President. I wanted to bring up, a few months back, we all sat through a presentation regarding the safer routes, walking routes in Norwood from the schools. We had a slideshow and we were applying for the grant, which the dollar amount was, first phase, were going to be like $400,000 or better, and it was going to improve different walking routes to the schools. Pleased to announce that they were, we were in cooperation with the schools, were awarded that grant recently. And Deb Robinson is here from the schools. I would like for her, if she wanted to just give a little explanation of the dollar amount, what it was, and how we fared out there, and what's the next step.
Ms. Robinson?
Well, thank you all. And we are very excited that we were able to work together to apply for this grant and receive these funds. The dollar amount is just under $400,000, and this is money that will go to the city of Norwood to fix and to work on infrastructure that will help students have access to safe routes to school. So to increase their ability to walk to school without, you know, without problems or bicycle to school, those kinds of things. So there are, if you remember, the big plan was in the millions of dollars. And you can only apply for $400,000 at a time. So we, based on some work here and talking to the schools and prioritizing things, we picked some of those items, some of those very specific things to do, and put together a plan and submitted it to the state, to a higher department of transportation, and we were fully funded for the amount that we asked for. So that, the next step for us is that we need a representative from the city to be part of this. And as soon as that happens, as soon as that person is appointed, then I can set up the next step, which is a meeting with the higher department of transportation, and then we start figuring out what we need to do. The really, the upside of this is as long as the federal government continues to fund this program, our larger travel plan has been approved. Every year, we can apply for whatever they allot, and in the last few years, it's been about $400,000. So the big work is done in terms of administratively pushing this through. And I'm just really excited that we get to do this together on behalf of our kids. Can I answer any questions?
Mr. Sager?
Yes. Do you need a representative appointed this evening? And if so, what would be entailed? Attend in the first meeting or many more, or what would be?
It doesn't have to be this evening, but it is, time is of the essence. So we cannot move forward until there is a person appointed that has some authority to either make decisions or come back and have you all make decisions, that kind of thing. As soon as we have the person, then I can get that contact information to our folks at ODOT, and then we can set up what they're called a scoping meeting. So I guess that's where we sit down and figure out, okay, what are our next steps and who is going to do what piece? So that's really kind of important. And the thing is, is that kind of the way the funding cycle is, you know, we really need to get on this and move so that when we get ready to apply again, which is in March, which is not that far away, we can demonstrate, here's what we've done with what you've given us, and so we can demonstrate that we've been good stewards. So we need to kind of move on this so that we can show them that we're doing what they've asked us to do with that money, so that when we apply again in March, we're in good standing. So I don't, I just don't want it to kind of hang around for three months and then assign somebody.
Is this individual need to be from council or from the city?
From the city.
From the city, okay.
I mean, it could be one of you, but it has to be somebody that, you know, it can't be me. It has to be, it has to be somebody from the city.
Questions, Steve?
I'm sorry, Mr. Sager.
The funds that, once we meet with the state, is there a timeframe on when those funds need to be expended? You know, like say, when they'll expire, you know, say, on what we were awarded this year, do we have to have the projects kicked off and at least in place to cover that money, or does it go away the first of the year and then you reapply in March?
No, I don't have an answer for that, other than when we were working on the planning part of it, our technical assistance folks, the guys that came here and did the presentation for you, said that some of these projects will take a little bit of time. So my guess is that not everything will have to be spent by, you know, March, or even, you know, within, you know, 365 days of getting the actual funds, but we have to be on our way of doing the work, you know. But again, I haven't gone to the scoping meeting, so I can't promise you that that's what that is.
Mr. Mumper?
I'd like to ask the mayor a question, if he's got somebody that he would like to be the person appointed to do this.
Mayor?
Thank you. We were, Joe and I have been discussing, recent events have delayed the conversation, but we've been discussing it, and you know, the discussion was, Joe was going to review it, do I want to ask Joe to attend it with everything else he's got going? Or Donna's out of town, she's not available to defend herself, so while she's out of town, I might appoint her because she won't be able to defend herself. So it will be that area, because see, what we're gonna, what we have to look at, one of the questions I had was, you know, once this process starts, we're going to have to, try Chris Brown into this, because when we look at putting these things out, you know, pricing these things out and have contractors do it, does it have to go out for bid? So, you know, the idea of doing it is great, it's fantastic, but I'm looking at, it'll either be Joe Gears or Donna Lake. And then we have to look at the, and with Joe's, you know, expertise in, you know, in the construction industry, Donna can serve as a liaison, but when it comes down to it, do we have to, do we have to do these things for bid? And look at all the pitfalls to make sure that we are doing it properly, if that makes any sense. So in the next couple of days, you'll have an answer.
Any other questions? Mr. Sager?
Just congratulations, nice cooperative effort, so.
It was a great cooperative effort, and I personally really appreciate everybody coming together because it really took, really, we've been working on this for years, and it took a lot of resolutions on your part and signatures and the school district and the city, and I appreciate it. And on behalf of the kids in our community, I appreciate that you're making their walks safer to school.
Thank you for all your work.
Thanks.
All right. Any other unfinished business? Mr. Sager?
Yes, sir. I spoke with the clerk earlier, and at the last meeting, we decided about setting the date for the citywide yard sale for that first weekend in September. And I, we do, maybe this goes through the chair to the law department, do we need a resolution and/or an ordinance, or one or the other?
You will need an ordinance. These will be the standard ordinances that we passed for the May 1. We have a little template that we use, and we will have that ready for the final meeting in August.
Mr. Sager?
Yep. Just so the, so we will have the citywide yard sale, you can start planning for it now, but it will be that first week in September, so approximately a month from now. Thanks.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business that anyone needs to bring up in front of council? We've covered so much already. No more new business, we're going to move to communications. The first is a letter from the mayor regarding executive session.
Ms. Donna M. Lake, President and members of Norwood City Council, RE Executive Session. Dear Madam President and members of council, I'm requesting that council go into executive session Tuesday, August 11, 2015, to discuss a contractual matter. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Do we have a motion to accept the letter and move into executive session? Mr. Sager, seconded by Mr. Breeden. Any discussion?
I think we need to state the reason we're going into executive session in the motion.
In the motion?
Yes.
Just put the letter away, hang on a minute.
Contractual matters?
For contractual, yes. So do we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss contractual matters? Everybody keeping their original motions?
Make mine them in.
All good? Call the roll.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sager?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All present voting yes, motion carries. We are moving into executive session, only those in the city, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, just, only city employees and council members can be present for this. I'll have to ask the rest of you to leave the room for the time being, make sure the door is closed behind you, and can't estimate how long this will take, but we just have a couple of letters afterwards, and excuse members, so there's not a lot substantive going on afterwards. This will probably be the first, we'll probably be back hopefully in the next two to three weeks. Basically, what this amounts to is we discuss this with Chris. You know, we do business with companies, and we don't discuss anything, we don't make announcements, we just do the discussions, let them make announcements. What I'm going to discuss with you tonight, it's a good company. I'm not in a position to release the name yet. What I want to do is give you an idea of what we've come up with, what they want and what we've offered. And then at the next council meeting, the proper ordinance and legislation will be put in place to put this agreement to legislation by new agreements. This is a company that has 300 employees, but the feds to hire another additional 110 after they relocate here. The payroll is right around 23 million to 24 million a year. Where they are at now, they are paying one and a quarter earnings tax. So they now want to, you know, they want a half off of ours, which makes it one and a half. We're right back to the same thing. This is not like it used to be, where it used to be as well, it's on location, if it's a weak for these companies. This does two things. It will further reinforce the direction that this city is going in. This is a good company. I can tell you what they do, it's a new concept, they are growing at a very rapid rate. The length of the agreement will be ten or 11 years, we'll refine that because of the lease that you're signing. This company takes, this company takes drawings, construction drawing, and reduces them and computerizes and puts them on file, so in such a fashion that if you have somebody, a construction company that prepares a building going up and there's $3 million in tile work, this company does the tile work, and get on there, look at that, access that drawing, access the square foot, access what the requirement are, and then make a proper bid, rather than send out these voluminous piles of construction drawings. So that's basically what it is. Like I said, it's a growing company. We will refine it next week with the law department and get it down and come to you with proper legislation. I don't want to violate any laws, but I mean, you know, if we can get some sort of limitation before we get all the stuff, once we come back, it will be clear, like to even hold off on the amended agenda and put it on Tuesday night, like who the company is, what they employ, get the terms of the agreement, and do it in an ordinance form. So that's basically it. Anything about this, I'll be more than happy to answer. Will maybe, will they expect us to take existing space or create a new space? They have, they're, quasi, it's a new building. And I think, and I think, yes, we're up for maybe 15 million into that building to build it out. So, you know, so it's one of those deals where we just have to compete. We've taken a position, we're in discussions now, we're an extremely large, we take, we are cautious, and Chris can tell you, you're a professional deal dealer, that we are cautious of what we say and do, because it's not like, you know, we haven't been leveraged before. And that's always a possibility of a liability. So it's, it's one of those things we just have to compete. And if somebody says, well, no, because the discussions we've had with most of these businesses, we take, it's the numbers. It's the numbers that count. The numbers dictate whether the deal goes through or not, whether they're financing, the bank, and that we know, to do the work to fix up the all. And it comes down to, some of these accounts, it's, judges, and you're reminding people for this company, it's all the numbers, the numbers that determine the deal, what you're on. And, you know, did you say what, say that one thing, bro? Oh, yeah. This is, this is a fringe thing, it's not, it's not Cincinnati, but my second choice is Blue, so, yeah, they're paying one point six. I, 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 one point two five, you know, one and a half, you know, it's up some, but yeah, it's worth it. So you're saying it's $23 million after they have a 100%? Yeah. And I tell you what, the way, you know, we'll be able to, you know, get more particular, but that's, that's what it is. They've applied for a thing to the tax, to the state, so they're, that's what's in their state, you see? So they're covering both ways. So it's $345,000, that's 5% a year, as opposed to 462% or zero. And that's, you know, we've always said that. It's not a matter of saying, do you want this, do you want that? But we, we've had enough discussions, and we're doing it long enough, where we know we can push it, but we don't push it. There's somewhere else, and I've said we've discussed it, we can't trust, so if we pass that, we'll get better. So, I think, we'll get it. We'll get it. We'll get the business. Number one, see, our competition is basically Blue. From what I understand, they're paying one and a quarter on the Blue Act, because, I remember when they used to say, you want to move, no, they don't say that. So, if we say, okay, we're going to do this deal, then they're going to have a proper bid. But if we don't do the deal, then they'll, they'll stay with our activities, and it's a little bit of a hassle. So, and, like I said, we just want, when it comes down to doing it, you know, the proper documentation, and I think that's what, right, we're all, we're, 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 we're going to, you know, we're going to, obviously, learn ideas together, but our, our, our goal is to take care of the best of the city, we look out for the city. Are you, you were saying, is it a new building? It's a new building, but is that site one, I think that's one, or is it seven? Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. It's already been built. Yeah, it, 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 we take, they're taking, they're taking a lot of square foot. I think there's only one building, office building, built. I would think it would be that one. I would think it would be that one. I mean, I'm trying to dance around it. Wait a minute, there are, it's helping you understand, they're already built. Yeah. But they're building, this company is not building a specific office space, the office space that they were going into is currently used. Right. And they, and they will put, they were going to lease it, and they will put $15 million in to build that. Now we understand. Now I understand. I'm trying to dance around it, because this is executive session, and everybody knows that if you discuss it outside of this, the gremlins come and get to the middle of the night, and we're going to, so, but I mean, unless somebody tells me, we're, we're, we're against this or something, or I'm going to have to have the legislature and have, basically what I'm going to pass, I'm, I have a belief, I'm laying it all, I have a belief that once the legislation is prepared and introduced in the council, it will, I believe it will take place. And I'd like to do it, amend the agenda and add it on that Tuesday night. And that's, and that's for public record. So, the next move? And if, and if I get an indication, I think that's all right. I think what, what could probably happen is they'll, they'll start, there's time, there's money, they'll start moving pretty quick and not cut off, you know, their nose and spider face with another municipality. But I think they'll move forward to, really quickly to address the issues in their location that they're talking about. We've had, we've had discussions, there's other ones coming on, but I know they'd like some of these to set out there. We'd like to take a position that in order to do something like this, you got to get something, and it's got to be fairly substantial. Who doesn't notice, you want to be, and some that are rotted, and Chris will tell you